Okay. Sarah, if you want to get started. Listen here and enjoy some of these short conversations.
Perfect. Well, thank you again, Mr. Mayor Commission. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here and inviting us back for this conversation today. I think, Darius, can I flip the slides?
Yes, you can stay put.
Oh, can I? Okay, perfect. So as you all remember, this is an opportunity to really dive deeper into understanding some of the services and investments that have been made in West Dayton after our most recent conversation. And I wanted to set the stage with everybody so that we could really think about this as a holistic community issue. And so when we think about what is happening in healthcare and some of the challenges that our residents are experiencing, it's really important that we look at this entire continuum for care and understand that when we talk about just our emergency departments and trauma and labor and delivery, those are services that are happening inside the walls of a hospital. But the depth and breadth of our healthcare system is so much bigger than that. And I think what you're going to hear today from some of our community partners are the services and programs that have been vested in community, some of the access points that have been created, and then some of the ongoing work to build out that care continuum for West Dayton residents. And a lot of that is happening in spaces other than acute care hospitals. And a lot of that is because we know, and our partners here in this room are living this on a day-to-day basis, there is a small fraction of someone's overall health that we can impact inside the walls of a hospital or inside of a health system. The other pieces are something that we are all responsible for as a community. Those socioeconomic factors and those social drivers of health in terms of our communities, the education we provide, the safety of our neighborhoods, the ability to have green spaces to walk, healthy foods in our neighborhoods, and then educating and ensuring residents understand that we do have some responsibility in these choices as well. Those are the choices that we make in terms of our healthy eating habits and our diet, but also choosing not to use tobacco, or as we know, the new product of vaping and influx with our young people today. And then obviously, some of the physical environment, physical infrastructures that we have in our community, we have a responsibility as a community to understand the quality of the environment that we're providing and the ways in which we're housing our citizens in this community to ensure that they have the ability to receive treatment in a healthcare center and return home to the safest home environment possible. So we also know that healthcare coverage is an important component of this conversation. There, we had a lot of work in 2008 as we launched the Affordable Care Act, and we kicked off an expansion of Medicaid to allow more and more residents to receive services covered under Medicaid. But we have not completely solved that challenge of our uninsured population. And so that is going to be an ongoing conversation that we still have to have with community members, helping them understand the qualifying and life events that they might experience to transition onto Medicare, or to understand the opportunities to enroll in private health insurance if they qualify under the Affordable Care Act, or if they qualify under Medicaid, we can get them enrolled in those services. That helps open their door to healthcare access. And one of the things that I think is really challenging for people to accept and understand right now, but we are living through a transition of where and how care is provided. And so this is where it's important to look at some of the challenges that we see with adult, inpatient, acute care settings, and that that is no longer where we're seeing the biggest segments of growth in healthcare. The spaces that are going to be growing now into 2020, 2030 are going to be our outpatient, our ambulatory care centers, but also those home-based care services. And so I think about those home-based care services for our aging populations in many instances, but also for moms and families when they're receiving prenatal care and their home visiting services to help them get that child to a healthy first birthday and then be ready for kindergarten readiness. So it's both those early-stage and those late-stage segments of life that we're looking at. And we continue to understand that we have to be thinking about all of these issues with a clear lens of equity. This is an ongoing challenge. I know we've referenced and we've talked about the fact that racism is a public health crisis. I think we are also at that stage and segment that it is time to look at what we are doing collectively with an impact-oriented lens around that cry that we came out with several years ago, and we acknowledge that racism is a public health crisis. What are we doing in that space? Right now, we know that our hospitals are screening patients for their needs, and so that is helping us connect residents to services, and we are able to ensure that we're building out services in communities. We are also looking at this challenge from a workforce perspective to ensure that we're building the workforce of today and tomorrow so that it reflects the nature of the communities that we serve. But this is a Herculean effort because it spans so many ages and stages of life. Every three years, our hospitals work together to create their community health needs assessment. Each organization does their own community health needs assessment, and then we also roll that up into a regional community health needs assessment. And this work is ongoing. It's on a cycle of every three years. And so we have just completed the survey work for 2024. I anticipate that we are still going to see some of the same common health challenges in terms of our cardiovascular health, diabetes care and services, mental and behavioral health, which we know is continuing to be a challenge in a post-pandemic environment for children and adults, and then ongoing gaps in terms of dental and vision services, some of those pieces that are segmented out from our traditional insurance packages, but by no means are things that we can't forget about. And then we look at the societal barriers and systemic barriers to improving the health of our population. These are all of the areas in which we are collectively leaning in to work together to address. And you'll hear about some of the individual efforts and some of the community efforts that our hospitals and our healthcare partners across the region are doing. The populations that we're working with oftentimes are our marginalized community members, and those community members who have had some of the more difficult journeys in life. It is not simply structured on race. It is oftentimes tied to education and socioeconomic status and lives lived in poverty. And with that poverty comes trauma. And so we have a long road ahead of us to continue to invest in the community and improve the overall health status of the community. This isn't something that in a matter of three years, or four years, or five years, we are going to change the trajectory. This is a long-term investment, and I think you're going to hear that from our healthcare partners as they're making service investments and program investments. They are in the neighborhood and committed to these services and these community members. There are a couple of programs that I want to highlight for you because these are really valuable tools for residents and constituents when they come to see you and they're seeking help and services. The first is more of a holistic program that allows a community member to work with a community health worker who is an individual that is trained and has lived experience and can help walk the journey with their clinical care team for some of the social needs that an individual experiences. Oftentimes, our community health workers are helping connect people to education resources, to work opportunity resources. They're helping facilitate referrals for medical appointments. Transportation continues to come up. But this is a really valuable program and opportunity that is open to any Medicaid individual, any individual enrolled in Medicaid can qualify for working with a community health worker. And it's an additional support person in their network. The other component that we've heard many, many times, and there is a lot of work happening in this space, is the investments in our maternal and infant health infrastructure. We have a very valuable program here in this community called Help Me Grow Brighter Futures. And that is one of the leading home visiting programs in this area to help support moms and babies, to help them get their child to that healthy first birthday, but then also connect them to additional programs like early intervention or early head start to ensure that our children are going through all of the necessary medical and health-related checks and well screens, but also addressing any types of developmental delays so that we can ensure that they're taking those steps to kindergarten readiness. This is one of the investments that we are also seeing come to light at the state level as well. And so this becomes really a valuable tool, I think, to really connect moms and babies to and their family structure to in the next several years. We serve a number of counties across the region for Help Me Grow Brighter Futures, but our target zip codes are in fact looking for supporting moms and families and babies in our West Dayton community. And so if you are receiving requests or have residents who are struggling with where to turn, we will help connect them to these resources. That is something that I want to make sure that we leave with today. And then as we look at where we are going in the future, there are two items that I know are weighing heavily on every single healthcare provider across the region. One is the impact that COVID-19 has had on our workforce. And so our workforce really bears the brunt of COVID-19 just as much as our residents and those individuals who contracted COVID-19, who we saw in our hospitals. The individuals who were with them and at their bedside were our healthcare workers, and that has created a significant challenge to rebound from. We're going to continue to focus on some of the workforce needs that our community has, but at the same time, the other critical impact that we are still recovering from also as a community is the need to invest in our behavioral health services and the mental and behavioral health services of our entire population. We do a lot of work and conversations in this community around prevention so that we're targeting the next generation, but we have individuals in this community who are in crisis right now. And so there is a very delicate and challenging balance that we have to strike to ensure that we are taking care of the people who are in crisis and suffering right now while making sure that we don't take away anything from the work that we're doing in the prevention space. And that is likely going to require additional investments in this space in the future. So those are a couple of the items that I want to leave you with. And then we're going to transition then so that you can hear from our hospital partners, our public health Dayton Montgomery County partners, who are leader in public health for this region, and some of our community health partners that are our frontline community health clinics who are invested and connected in the neighborhoods as well. So if there are no questions, I can transition to our next presenter.
Just wanted to make one comment real quickly because it affects all of us. Approximately 10, maybe 12 years ago, the state of Ohio Education Department reduced or minimized requirement for health and PE education. And that's a major component for us that contributes a lot to young people growing, even as adults that don't have the kind of information that a lot of us had growing up. Healthy food groups, healthy type of things you do in terms of healthy lifestyles. And as each of you may think about that, if you want to have a comment associated with that, now we want to look at the future in terms of how we can go to the state level even from a lobbyist's perspective and see how we can improve that into the comprehensive activities again. I think they reduced it from one credit to a fourth of a credit, I believe. And they give credit to that credit even for just their participation in certain activities in school. Don't, you know, just a thought.
Thank you, thank you. So our first presenter from our hospital community is Premier Health.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Martin. I am chief compliance.
I didn't realize those were wireless. How handly.
Again, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Dwayne Martin. I'm the chief compliance and enterprise risk officer at Premier Health. I am also the chair of the Phoenix Next Dayton Board. That's a very honored position for me.
And Dr. Andre Harris, I'm the chief medical officer for Miami Valley Hospital.
Excellent. What you see on the screen is the Premier Health compass. It describes our vision, mission, values, and commitment. The, I like to say, the mission is our North Star. Here, we teach, we innovate, we serve. At Premier Health, we fully embrace the goal of building a healthy community. We're committed to supporting initiatives that will positively affect the people we serve. We remain committed to healthcare services across the region. Now I will pass off to my partner to talk about some of the services that we actually provide.
So Miami Valley Hospital has served Dayton and Southwest Ohio for, since 1890. We are currently the 10th largest hospital in the United States based on bed volume. So we have a big imprint and have a lot of responsibility for the area. We're a Level 1 Trauma Center and the region's most experienced and the only adult Level 1 Trauma Center in the area. We also have a comprehensive stroke center. U.S. News and World Report has consistently shown us as one of the top hospitals in the state. We're number nine in the state and the top hospital for the Dayton metropolitan area. Our high rankings according to U.S. News and World Report, high-performing areas deal with aortic valve surgery, colon cancer, COPD, heart failure, heart bypass, hip and knees, and a variety of other things. In particular, one area that I'm really proud of as a practicing obstetrician that have been in the area, I finished up my residency in 2006 and started practice in Dayton, in particular on the west side of Dayton. My office had been at St. East for probably 16 years, and now I'm up on North Main. And as a practicing obstetrician, the maternal portion of what we've been doing as an organization really has been kind of a hallmark for how we are trying to show up in the community. We all know that maternal mortality is highest amongst black women, and infant mortality has consistently been a problem across the nation when it comes to the disparities that you see between black children and our white counterparts. And so that gap really hasn't changed across the country. I would say that when it comes to Premier, we're still in that same spot, but we've been able to make some really good inroads when it comes to some of the outcomes associated to maternal and fetal. Some of the other areas that we have been instrumental in, Help Me Grow, you saw it came up, started in 1999. Premier has given greater than $15 million towards Help Me Grow. Emmett's Place, which is a partnership with the Ronald McDonald House, is embedded inside of our NICU, so it's a place for patients who, their kids are in the NICU. And so kind of it was the concept of some places they can go and get changed because they're there and they're staying in the hospital. Family Beginnings, which is a very unique situation that we have that you see across the country, that there are a lot of moms that want more of a kind of a natural childbirth thing. That was embedded into the hospital and is on the same floor as our regular labor and delivery, but gives moms the ability to deliver in a home-style type of environment, but with the safety for being able to convert this over if you need to in some risky situations. We train residents, which we've been doing for 50 years. We train nurses, which we've been doing for an even longer part of the time. We also have our Centurion program, which is getting us once again back to that maternal fetal health and wellness that we do together. And as I mentioned before, that we have a, U.S. News and World Report's best hospital for maternity care.
Services that are specifically provided on the west side of Dayton, the Northwest Health and Wellness Campus, which was spawned out of the Phoenix Next project. We've got healthcare services associated with those currently. We've got the urgent care. We have physical therapy, imaging, lab, specialized service. We have a diabetes center and cardiology over there. We've also, again, we partnered with the YMCA to help the community in their health, to have someplace to go to workout. Kids can go there. We've also partnered with Wright State, Goodwill, Care Source, and County Corps. I think Sarah talked about things outside of just providing healthcare. It's the wraparound services that are important to help improve care. So we've done that as well. There are other things that we've done in Northwest that aren't on that campus. We invested in Five Rivers Health Center. Premier's put $28 million since 2015. We invested in the Gem City Market, put $440,000 there. Barber shop health initiative program. We partnered with about five or six local black barber shops, beauty salons. We went in, we did health screenings. We taught about your numbers. We went through, we even got AED machines in case something happened because, again, we heard a story about an individual who was in a barber shop, went home from lunch and ended up going into cardiac arrest and passing away while they're at lunch. And the barber said, well, what happens if this happens in our shop? They needed those AEDs, so we supported them there. We also have a community paramedicine program. That program was really focused on the folks that were utilizing the ER more often than they should be, and that was prior to us getting the Northwest Health and Wellness Campus up and running and getting healthcare services over there. So the community paramedicine program, there's some funding challenges there, but it's still a program in existence. We also contribute to the Wesley Center. We've given over $30,000 to the Wesley Center, and we continue to interact on a routine basis with them as well. If we have time at the end, I'll talk about the Phoenix Project and some of the other things that we've done. And I'm going to read you a list, and it's a pretty exhaustive list. So I want to give Dr. Harris an opportunity to finish speaking before I take up the rest of our time.
I think I already kind of covered the maternity care, so I'll let you take up the rest of our time.
That sounds good. So significant projects that were spawned either by the Phoenix Next Project or that we participated in over the years since 2003. We helped with a new K-38 school, a new community library, a new community health center, 15 acres of new community green space, the Salem Avenue Urban Tree Farm, Fairview Neighborhoods Garden upgrades, Splash Park and Enhanced Playground, Salem Catawpa Traffic Enhancement, Salem Catawpa Park and Gateway. 75 dilapidated structures have been demolished. Thank you, city. Three new houses have been constructed, or 33 new houses have been constructed within that area. 45 home improvement loans to existing homeowners. 15 homes are owned by elderly homeowners have been painted at no cost to them. We have five rental properties that we've improved. 15 homes have been painted and repaired for low-income seniors through partnership. We're rebuilding together. 18 years of community policing. I actually am about to sign that contract again where we've got several officers that are specifically assigned to the Phoenix Next area, and we pay that. We pay their salaries, and they're there. And they've been awesome partners to us, and we've been doing that for 18 years. 10 years of summer youth programs, 10 years of extended hours at the community pools, Saturdays, five years sponsor at Fairview School Neighborhood Centers, more than 100 mini grant projects designed to support grassroots neighborhood beautification projects, $1 million private investment through home improvement initiatives, and the launch of Premier Health in the city of Dayton's Community Paramedicine Program. So those are some of the things that have happened in the Phoenix Next area, and we have more things that are coming. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Really appreciative of all the work that you're doing in that space, and I'm sure my colleagues have a word or two they'd like to share as well. Turn the slots.
Thanks. Really mean, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman-Brett. Correctly, very close, right? But thank you, I really appreciate your overview. I think you hit the nail on the head in terms of a lot of challenges that we're facing, but also highlighting the work that is being done. And I also like to think, I know this kind of probably sprung out of the conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago and during the commission meeting. And so, Mr. Beckham, thank you for taking the initiative and coordinating and bringing all of the partners together. Just a couple of questions. So in regards to, so just out of curiosity, what, and this is more so reflected to you, Dr. Harris, like what are you seeing in your practice? And what are you seeing in some of the, you know, we have the challenges when it comes to women's health, the socioeconomic factors that we are experiencing right now, and just the disparities overall, the poverty level, the list goes on and on. But could you just highlight some of the things that you are seeing in your practice?
I, you know, I think one of the things that is ongoing and that we have to do, it is well-established in literature and everywhere that you have to put, you're going to have to put black physicians back in the community. We have, we have an aging group of docs that, in particular in primary care. So when I think about what's going to have the biggest foothold and is going to secure my community, it's going to be us investing in more primary care. Because, you know, having a hospital in Salem as opposed to right across the river, I would rather that people not have to rush to the hospital in this last stage stitch type of thing. I would rather that you got your blood pressure checked some time ago, and that you got put on medication if need, so that you got your weight down. Then we did all of kind of the preventative maintenance so that you're not rushing to the hospital for a heart attack or symptoms of a stroke. You know, by the time that you get to the hospital in that condition, we're so far behind the eight ball. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we're not going to be able to affect just in inside of the walls of the hospital, which, you know, I love that you brought up because when you look at the effect of all the social determinants of health, which we're finally at a place now where joint commission is requiring that hospitals collect that information. The next step is, okay, what do you do once you collect that information? Once you see that there are disparities and how care is being delivered, what's your next step? And that's kind of where my focus is as a chief medical officer for Miami Valley Hospital is how I lead in this space. How do I make sure that when we see the disparities and our leadership is in a place now where I feel like we really are in a spot where we can, we can make some considerable changes? We have more physician leadership in our hospital than we've ever had before in the past. President and COO system is a hospitalist who was a CMO like I am and now is president of Miami Valley Hospital. So I think where we, where we're going to make the biggest impact is really is embedding more into the community in that primary care setting, whether it's family practice, pediatrics, obstetrics, that that's where the focus is going to have to be. Because I think that's where we're going to make the biggest impact is those office appointments rather than a ER or hospital appointment.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And what are we doing collectively? And I used to go through making sure that we have a greater emphasis on the primary care, right, the preventative measures. How are you all doing in regards to recruitment, payment? And again, we know we have those staffing challenges, but to make sure that, because to your point, a lot of our primary care doctors, they are now going into retirement, if you will. So are there things that you all are doing to help with recruitment?
We've been, yes, yes.
All right, very good.
Yes. The short answer is yes, without spilling everything.
College tours and everything.
I think, I think there are a lot of different opportunities that we have. Wright State has Wright State Medical School that we have good attachment to. I'm the president of Gem City, which is our physicians, pharmacists, and our physician pharmacists. And what am I missing?
Physician pharmaceutical society.
Yeah, but I'm missing one group, but that we have a, we have a tie to medical school. And so increasing that relationship, making sure that we can come back in and get secure physicians for that next, the next generation. We have residency programs. There's no reason why we can't, we can't sweeten the pot to make sure that people want to stay. And in particular, we got to get people to be on the west side of Dayton. I know it's not enough just to be in the city, but not be in the community that has the most care.
Thank you. Last question, and I'm going to make sure I'm respectful for my other colleagues. I know they have questions. Mr. Martin, in regards to, I know you mentioned a number of things that Premier has invested in. Are you at liberty to discussing some of the things that are now on the horizon for those additional investments to be made throughout the community? And then are we looking at, I know once upon a time, and maybe it was rumored, but there were thoughts that the campus, the Northwest campus, if you will, where the current Y is now standing, that there may be. if you will, where the, the current Y is now standing, that there may be additional office space for physicians or, or housing opportunities? Or are you at liberty discussing any of those?
I am. We're, we're working on all the above. The, one of the primary focuses of the Phoenix Neck Dayton Board is bringing new housing developments, bringing increased units there. But at the same time, that's what Dr. Harris kind of smiled over there. We've been having conversations about increasing the number of primary care physicians on that campus and expanding services.
Good to see my colleagues here. I always feel like I'm a little bit on gray area.
Before you go, just, we're going to try to do maybe one or two questions so we make sure we get to everyone. Yeah.
I was just going to say that I typically recuse myself on the issues that come around the hospital. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. So excuse myself in this conversation. I'll listen intently.
Yeah. I know that we've got several other organizations that are going to be presenting today. So, and we have a very short amount of time. I would love to be able to engage further with a bunch of questions. What I was really looking to get out of this conversation was this issue of connectivity. And specifically in Northwest and Southwest Dayton. These are the kinds of things that I kind of want to hear from the rest of the folks that are in the room, also Premier, of course. But this level of connectivity, where are the gaps? Where can we be helpful? Where can we grow? And things like that. So I appreciate your time, but I just want, I know that we're really short on time. So thank you.
And our next speaker is Mike Frindell, President of Kettering Health Dayton. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I might have missed, mixed up our order. I apologize to our friends at Dayton Children's. Our friends at Dayton Children's are next. Dr. Alonso Patterson and Jessica Salem.
We have short remarks, no presentation. And we do have a packet in front of all of you, which really digs into our community health needs assessment and some overarching things of Dayton Children's. But we wanted to address you tonight, really just speak specifically to West Dayton and what we're doing in that space. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. Dayton Children's Hospital fully acknowledges that health disparities exist in Dayton, and health outcomes for children in West Dayton are significantly poorer than outcomes for children in other parts of the city and the region. We recognize that these disparities exist due to inequalities in resources and access, which are a product of decades of disinvestment through redlining and other social policies which have negatively impacted the African-American population of Dayton. Therefore, Dayton Children's has deliberately and strategically identified child health disparities as a focus of ours. In 2020, the hospital created the Center for Health Equity, of which Dr. Patterson and I lead, to specifically identify health disparities and address them both internally and beyond the walls of the hospital in partnership with the community. Dayton Children's strategic roadmap approved by our board in late 2020 specifically calls for a focus on child health disparities with requirement to invest and work in West Dayton community to reduce the barriers to optimal health. Our 2023 Community Health Needs Assessment also identified West and Northwest Dayton as priority regions in which we conducted community-based data surveys and focus groups to identify what matters most to families in these communities as it relates to their child's health. Our Community Health Improvement Plan aligns with our strategic plan to ensure our work is focused in the areas of greatest need. Our vision at Dayton Children's is reinventing the path for children's health for families throughout our region and beyond. At Dayton Children's, as we reinvent this path, we know that partnerships are crucial and care needs to be delivered in unique ways to cut through those barriers such as lack of transportation or clinic appointments that don't meet a family's needs. We have partnered with the Greater Dayton School and currently provide clinical care to nearly 35 children from West Dayton onsite at the school. Through our care coordination program, which supports families on Medicaid with chronic diseases requiring additional support, we currently serve 283 children in West Dayton. We know that 80% of a child's health is determined by factors beyond clinical care, including community conditions such as housing, food access, and education. Dayton Children's continues to invest in programs and organizations to holistically address health and improve social supports for children. Over $160,000 of our community benefit grant program funding was provided to organizations serving children and families in West Dayton over just the last three years. Dayton Children's donated $50,000 to the Gym City Market Capital Project in 2021. And we've also programmatically and financially supported the Montgomery County Imagination Library, $150,000 over the last five years, with specific outreach to West Dayton neighborhoods to improve literacy and kindergarten readiness.
For children, access and participation in primary care at a pediatrician's office is crucial to help identify and address health issues early before chronic conditions become unmanaged or more severe. Pediatrics is focused on prevention. As a primary care provider for over three decades, I have built relationships with patients, families, and follow children from infancy to early adulthood. And as all the gray hair shows, I'm willing to my second generation of patients and, and families. Dayton Children's understands the power primary care plays in improving the health of our communities. So we've tried to focus on strengthening primary care services in West Dayton. In 2021, we partnered with Omega CDC and opened the Dayton Children's Northwest Center at the Hope Center. It's a primary care clinic that's open from 8 to 4, Monday through Friday, and saw over 4,000 patients in the past fiscal year. Currently, this clinic is only taking new appointments from patients in West Dayton. Dayton Children's is focused on growing a strong primary care network to improve access for families and to give them a medical home. Dayton Children's will also be opening a facility in West Dayton on the corner of Germantown and James H. McGee in spring of 2026. This facility will be dedicated to on-demand care for families to augment the primary care services currently being offered in the community. Our current plan calls for the facility to be open from 12:00 PM noon to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. Our team specifically worked with local organizations and parents to identify the right services to offer in this location. Many families were looking for an option other than our emergency department for emergency, for non-emergent acute care. One mother said that there's, isn't a place to go for a sports injury after, in the evening, after, after practice. Our goal is to provide acute care in this setting as an alternative and more convenient choice for families. Two key areas of need found in the pediatric population are infant mortality and mental and behavioral health. Dayton Children's is diligently working with public health partners, community health, and hospital providers in obtaining the community voice to shape and move forward initiatives to lower infant mortality rates than in some parts of our community are as high as they are in children's, countries like Syria. Construction is moving forward to bring more services to the new Mateo Center for Mental Health and Wellness on Dayton Children's campus. But we will continue to push for ways to provide much-needed services in several Dayton Public Schools, through after-school programs, and other partner sites in vulnerable neighborhoods of Dayton. Addressing health disparities is a complex challenge. And Dayton Children's knows we cannot do this work alone. We have many programmatic partnerships with West Dayton community-based organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club, Wesley Center, Omega CDC, Sunlight Village, and the Dakota Center. Finally, Dayton Children lends our leadership to coalitions and collaborations that address key health and education issues for children, including leadership in the Zero to Five Collaborative with Preschool Promise and the Dayton Asthma Alliance. We have made it a priority to broaden our education and workforce development for pediatric residents, staff physicians, and hospital staff to focus on health equity and anti-racism work that translates into better health outcomes for marginalized communities. We appreciate your time today and the opportunity to share how Dayton Children's is working to address health disparities and support children and families in West Dayton.
Thank you. So if I hold out questions until the end, I'll let you go ahead and call your next president.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next speaker is Mike Frindell, Kettering Health Dayton.
Mayors, commissioners, our city executives. It is a privilege to be here, and it's a privilege to be here with each of you. I bring you greetings from our senior executives, Mr. Mike Gentry, who is our new Kettering Health executive. And I also bring you greetings from our just wonderful team at Kettering Health Dayton. I've been on board for about eight months now with Kettering Health Dayton. But that does not speak to the love that I have with Kettering, because this is my third tour of duty. I started in 1974 as a young lad. I've worked in just about every place that a hospital employs somebody. And it's been a real privilege to have served not only at Kettering, but to acquire experiences through the doors that God has opened throughout my career and that of my wife. Realize that my voice represents many, many good people, both within Kettering Health and those that have helped make Kettering Health what it is today. And being in the different locales that I've been in, I think that the city of Dayton and our surrounding suburbs, our 14 counties, and our huge population can really be grateful for the healthcare that we have. And that is of vital importance as businesses look to come here, as families look to come here. In one of my settings, you know, to hear businesses wanting to come here from Scandinavia, and I can tell you probably 20, 30 years ago, that was not a conversation. So I extend those greetings to you. I'm clinically trained as both x-ray tech and as a nurse. Been in that realm for 42 years, although the last time I took care of a patient, my colleagues said I was probably just babysitting the patient. So I am, I am very pleased to offer these slides and respond to any questions that you have. Not only now, I'll leave you with my business cards. If there's more information, be glad to share that as well. Who we are, Kettering Health, our mission is to improve the quality of life of the people in the communities we serve through healthcare and education. When Eugene and Virginia Kettering asked the Seventh Amendmentist Church to become administrators of a hospital in honor of Charles F. Kettering, it was because of the care that they saw and participated in in Hinsdale, Illinois with the polio epidemics. And since the early 1960s, there has been a profound impact on the communities, I think, because of the faith-based component that we bring to our care. We believe that that's a part of our whole person care. More specifically, in the late 90s, when Kettering Health and Grandview and Southview Hospitals came together as a predominantly allopathic hospital, MDs, and osteopathic organization physicians or doctors of osteopathy, DOs, we felt that that was a divine merger because of the, the whole person care belief that osteopathic physicians bring to bear. That is not to say that one is greater than the other. It's a different approach on how care comes together. The evolution of such today is, is that Kettering Health is intertwined with multiple professionals in this space, allopathic, osteopathic, nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, CRNAs, critical care specialists that have come together to positively impact the patient. Our vision is to be recognized as a leader in transforming the healthcare experience. And that is vital for us today. I have an appreciation for your question earlier relative to where's, where's the help coming from. I can tell you that there's 191 nurses that retire every day, and there's 130 that are coming out of our schools nationwide. So that's easy math for us. That's a deficit of 60 every day. So the solution is not to hire more nurses. This isn't a solution where we go out and grab nurses from other states or other hospitals. It really is to innovate and redesign care. And that is a commitment that we have with Kettering Health. And I actually believe that Premier Health and Mercy Bond Securities and the other hospitals and partners that we have within the Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association have. We are moving that forward. And you see the values on the screen, and I'll highlight innovative. So in the, in the legacy of Charles F. Kettering, who owns the second most number of patents in the United States, his former home now is the Center of Innovation for Kettering Health. And that is a physician-led part of our work that we do to truly redesign care delivery. That is not focused just on care delivery in a hospital setting, but is for that full continuum of, of care. And if you would, that's from cradle to grave. And what does that look like? And that's a great, great aspect that actually, I think, invigorates many people that have been in the, in the profession for a while. So a little bit of the 100 here, 100-year history, starting more with the macro of Kettering Health and then bringing this down to Kettering Health Dayton. Most members of our community remember Grandview and to the south of the South, Southview, down in the, in the Miami Township area. Although the name has changed, and we wanted to define our hospitals based upon the primary location that they were in, the quality of care continues. And I think that's important for our citizens and our leaders to understand. 100-year history of service to care in this community. We also believe that there's great importance for us to sponsor and invest in, in this community. And you'll hear just a little bit more about that. We are also a major employer with more than 1,400 employees, right around 90-plus or minus volunteers. Our volunteers come, like most hospitals, from either former patients or former workers. And then we have launched into different areas of bringing more team members forward, such as the Second Chance Program that we have in, in Dayton, as well as a new, a new relationship with the Hope Center in bringing good, good people forward that are aligned with our, our mission and our values. And we've been successful in that. We have almost 800 physicians on staff and about 425 advanced practice providers. There's a typo on the screen, and I usually like to admit typos, but we have 289 licensed beds. And part of that is through the expansions that we've had over the years. I would like you to go away with one key thing, is that we are very comfortable making this promise that we want to follow in the footsteps of Jesus in guiding every person to their best health. That is of vital importance to us. So how are we going to do that? Brief slide here. We have different ways that we like to affirm, acknowledge our team. On the left-hand side, you see the Sunflower Award. This is a national recognition that we have brought locally. And Tina, who was our award winner on Monday, was chosen because of a specific patient in which she was an anxiety reducer prior to a procedure that she was going to have. And it was a full-page letter talking about Tina. And so we said, Tina, you are special. The Daisy Award is a special foundation that exists in the nation, and this is specific to nursing. And so this is the team that elevates one person on such a day for our Daisy Award winner. As you can see from these screens here, and a study important to me is what, what does our workforce look like compared to what the community is? We're close to that. We're not exactly that. But with Kettering Health Dayton, our full, our full team, our diversity is really quite close. And of note, we do have five generations in our workforce, which is interesting. I enjoy it because it's new, new language for me every day. Here's some fast facts. We are a not-for-profit acute care hospital, and we have in the emergency department, more than 41,000 patients every year. I used to work in King County, Seattle, on Pill Hill. And we had six hospitals when I was there. This would represent probably the second highest ED in downtown Seattle with Harborview, probably almost tripling that number as a Level One trauma center. We are a comprehensive healthcare hospital. It's very typical of our urban hospital, full cardiac services, emergency care. Our Level Three trauma designation requires us to be able to take care of Level Two. And we are so grateful for the Level One trauma care that Premier Health Miami Valley Downtown provides. It's a true asset to our community. In West Dayton, our, our Kettering Health Medical Group provides onsite clinical care. We have 30 clinics that are in the West Dayton, North Dayton areas with providers. We are opening a clinic in January on Gettysburg as well. Dr. Rochelle Doolin will be our primary physician there, and she is a Dayton native and proud to have grown up here and to be a physician here and came out of our program. Kettering Health Dayton, our open-heart surgery program, represents a hospital that has received represents a hospital that has received a three-star ranking by the Society of Thoracic Surgery, which is the recognizing body. And only about 10% of the hospitals in the United States have achieved that three-star ranking. We are also a certified primary stroke center. And then we are the largest academic or teaching hospital in the region. We host 136 residents and fellows encompassing 11 different physician training programs. And the good news is that out of those programs, we have a very high retention rate. And depending upon one of, one of those physician disciplines, we have about an 80% retention measure and we have about an 8% retention measure. Ophthalmology is a hard one to keep in this area. But we have an ophthalmology program. And again, grateful for all of the program directors that, that train tomorrow's physicians. We also operate the Casano Health Center. We do that in partnership with Primary Health Solutions. That is a federally qualified health center. It also houses our family medicine residency there as well. Our family medicine programs take care of moms, babies. They don't birth, but the 10 months surrounding that. We also have a very robust telehealth program, but frankly, it's not the, the highest volume that it can be. And, and our executives on the telehealth side are continuing to expand. But we have well over 20,000 telehealth visits every year. We have about 5,000 of those that are with the behavioral health component in the community as well. And then on the quality side, and there's different ways, different ways you can read the information that comes out. But Kettering Health Dayton, for five periods in a row, has been a leapfrog grade A, which is the highest that you can get. Leapfrog, in brief, was started by companies out in the Seattle area to help define that if certain practices are met, you can expect that certain outcomes will be achieved. And we've enjoyed that. As far as the community specifically, as things were changing in West Dayton relative to hospitals and different models of care, Kettering invented, invested over $20 million. And there's a picture of the emergency department. That was just in the emergency services. We increased, as you can see on the screen, a significant number of bed, beds. But a key part for me is six with behavioral health. I have a strong background in behavioral health programs in the different cities that I've worked with. Four trauma bays and critical care beds there as well, as well as expanded imaging. We have another 13 million that was spent on infrastructure to be able to, to handle the, the changing population coming into Kettering Health Dayton. And as I mentioned, we're opening a new primary care clinic in 2024. As far as community benefit, the Community Health Needs Assessment. Thank you, Sarah and team, for the China that is done. It helps us shape how we will interact, how we will impact our community in a positive way. Mike Gentry, when he came on board, asked us as president, he said, "How would the community know that you were there?" And just like I had a bit of silence, it took a bit of pondering to say, "How would my community know that I am, I, I am there?" And so it is a key focus that Mr. Gentry, as well as our executives, all the way down to our frontline leaders and our staff has. How do we impact our community? And the overall comment would be is that partnership programming. If it solely comes from a hospital or a health system, we, we will be very myopic on, on the, on the path that we go down. So it's important. So you see an example of Gem City Market, the cooking classes that we sponsor. We actually help teach them. Dr. Doolin leads an initiative where it's called Food is Medicine. And that has taken off, so much so that one of our recovery room nurses, Mr. Bruce Kidney, gathered great support. We dedicated eight city lots to be our unity garden. So this is farm-to-table for members of our community, which we're very pleased to see grow, pun intended. Core need is education, strategic path that we are taking on that. Not only with Kettering Health, if you remember in our mission statement, we will achieve this through healthcare and education. Kettering College was started three years after main campus opened. And so it's through Kettering College. But we have actually reached into the high school and some middle schools. And we've developed programs where actually high school students can work in healthcare and see if this is the place to be. You'll see the comments regarding Dayton Metro Libraries, where we teach onsite, and then specific education aspects that we have. A key thing is the dieticians that we have and then the food pantry support as well. This is just a slide saying, here's the different areas where we are involved in, in whether that's clinical expertise that we bring or whether that's layman's interactions in the community. So I'd like to close with this and, and it's been said very well is that healthcare is transitioning from a healing model to a health model. And I think we all have to embrace that. So as we look at, do we need more hospitals, frankly? Or do we need, need a care redesign? We clearly favor a care redesign so that we are actually living, living more healthy. And we want to do that planning with our community. That this is achievable, an achievable goal specifically in West Dayton. In closing, I would say that on behalf of Kettering Health leadership, our employees, our physicians, we know that we can expand our work together. We can achieve what we want to achieve for our residents, for the people that we love and care for. I'm grateful for your time today. Thank you.
Really appreciate that. Very appreciative of the work you're doing also with any public schools. And that's a new program that you just started this year. And I know that the people are doing something as well to get that program, working with people from Dunbar. Long time coming for quite a while. So I know probably, can we squeeze another 10 minutes? Bye.
Your meeting.
You guys got, got work to do for us.
Sure. Thank you. So what I might do is have our next presenters all come join us at the table. And we're going to do rapid fire as we go down the line and ask everybody to highlight some of the most important investments and connections that they're making in the West Dayton community. And I think then that'll allow for also a little bit of time for questions and answers. Darius has all of the slides ready. Perfect. We're going to, we're going to move down the line. And so we'll start with our colleagues at Public Health Dayton, Montgomery County. Because this is really one of our core connections as we think more broadly about the health of our community, not just the care and service delivery, but the current health and the future health of our community. Here's a presentation.
Thank you, Sarah. Commissioners, thank you for having us. My name is Josh Lucas. I'm the Director of the Office of the Health Commissioner at Public Health Dayton, Montgomery County. And I'll go through some health services we specifically provide for our community. So our mission is to improve the quality of life of our community by achieving the goals of public health, prevention, promotion, and protection. And our vision is Montgomery County is healthy, safe, and thriving community. We are led by our guiding principles centered around community, committed to health equity, collaboration, collaborating for impact, operating with accountability, and we operate based on evidence. So our, just an overview of public health. We have 50-plus programs and services. And I have one-pagers, just quick description of what we have. Also our annual report available and my business cards if you have further questions. And we have, we are one of the largest health departments in the state of Ohio. And we have 250 full-time staff equivalents based on our last year's budget. So I like bringing up this color wheel as kind of explaining what public health's role is in our community. So public health actively promotes policies, creates systems, and provides services that help enable good health in Montgomery County. And what you see here is a color wheel of the 10 essential public health services. And that is really organized around three important core functions of public health, which is assessment, policy development, and assurance. And the 10 essential public health service, services center around equity and incorporates the concepts relevant to current and future public health practice. We are an accredited health department. We have achieved the national accreditation by demonstrating that we have the highest standards for delivering quality programs and services within our community. We have a focus on health equity. And public health has collective actions aimed at ensuring that all population groups in Montgomery County have equal opportunity for health and well-being. And it is one of our agency's guiding principles. So getting into a little bit of our countywide impact, our impact is with STD and HIV prevention, recovery services, immunization, air quality monitoring, restaurant inspections, public health emergency response. Diving into a little bit of our programs and services, Public Health Dayton, Montgomery County promotes health, promotes healthy living through our health promotion offices, where lives our Bureau of Chronic Disease Prevention, houses our Injury Prevention Program, health education, student wellness, men's health initiatives. Then in our Bureau of Maternal and Child Health, we have our Neighborhood Navigation, Community Health and Advocacy, prenatal outreach, baby and meat tobacco-free, Moms Quit for Two, and Crips for Kids program. Then diving into our health services, trying to keep Montgomery County healthy, we have our Recovery Services Program, which houses our problem gambling prevention, outpatient services, overdose outreach, then our disease prevention program. We have disease intervention and prevention for HIV. We have school health nurses, children with medical handicaps, community health nursing and outreach. In our Bureau of Communicable Disease, we have our tuberculosis clinic, our refugee clinic, communicable disease reporting, immunization clinic, STD clinic, and our lab. And I want to stress that Public Health Dayton, Montgomery County does not provide general medical care. We have a focused niche of providing services to our most needed populations. So a little bit about our locations. We have our Rebel Building, which is our headquarters. Basically, all of our locations, except for the Miami's BIC Women, Infants, and Children Program, are located in the city of Dayton. Sunrise Center is out on East Fifth Street and Drew Health Center is out on, on West Third Street. A little bit more Rebel Building. We have many programs, specifically health services provided, our Refugee Clinic for vaccinations and medical screenings, STD Clinic for testing and treatment, TB Clinic for testing and treatment, and our immunization, immunization clinic for vaccinations. And our Drew Health Center out on West Third Street, we have our WIC program and also disease prevention programs. Sunrise Center also has our WIC program. Moms and Babies First staff are located there and are, it's like a home base for them. And that's a home visiting program for pregnant moms and educational linkage. Okay, so that's a little bit more in detail of what services we have. I do want to point out our immunization clinic provides childhood vaccinations, adult vaccinations, and travel vaccinations. So here is a heat map of our WIC clients. We get about 30,000 visits a year. WIC, I'll go a little bit more into detail, is a nutrition program that provides healthy foods to pregnant, postpartum, and breastfeeding women, infants, and children up to age five. WIC also encourages breastfeeding and provides breastfeeding support. WIC provides nutritious, nutritious foods and supplement diets, nutrition education, including breastfeeding promotion and support, and refers to health and other social services. I want to focus a little bit on our refugee and parolee screenings. Our local health districts in the state of Ohio, they're required to provide domestic health screenings. Only a few health districts in the state of Ohio have, has the capacity to do this. So if a refugee is coming to the U.S. through the Refugee Resettlement Program, they have to have these health screenings within 30 days. More refugees than parolees and secondary migrants are seen in our clinics. I do want to mention that humanitarian parolees coming to the county have health requirements associated with their parolee status, including TB, blood tests, certain vaccinations within 90 days of arriving here. And health screenings are provided within our refugee clinic. That's the gist of all our programs and services at Public Health. Thank you very much.
So I know we're continuing to inch up on time. And our last presenters are all from our federally qualified health centers and community clinics. And so, Mayor, I wonder if there might be an opportunity to have everyone highlight some of their work, but then perhaps also come back to have even, an even more robust conversation around the role of federally qualified health centers and also some of the challenges that our federally qualified health centers are facing. Because this has been woven into our model in our community, but in communities across the country. And they, they still have their own set of challenges that, that are completely different from some of our hospital settings. So I want to make sure that we find a time that they have their time in the spotlight as well.
How do you make that happen?
Oh, sorry.
While you're getting set up, I just wanted to say now in advance, thank you so much for what you are doing, what you have done. And the stepping up, of course, in the supports that we've had over the last few years. It's been a tremendous effort on your part from all of you. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Greg Hopkins with Community Health Centers Greater Dayton. Briefly, our services, primary care, medical, and behavioral health are enabling services. So we provide patient education, translation assistance with transportation and financial capability assistance as well. Our missionaries, food and life, primary, quality, primary, and preventive health services adults in need regardless of ability to pay. So we're able to adopt your office. Fantastic work that you highlighted earlier. I don't know, let's keep you out of the house, sir. Find convenient locations. I've highlighted Charles Drew Health Center. So we provide the primary care at Charles Drew. Public Health has some other services. So just highlighting our west location, West Dayton. Pictures there, our facilities, small and free. We also have school-based health services. So we probably would be a partner with Dayton Public Schools. They just bought a brand-new mobile home and we're very excited about that. It'll be back on the road again. And we have dental services at two West Dayton locations. The Met is in Fort Worth. Then Kings Highway is in West Dayton. We provide dental services at those locations for Head Start kids. We have other child health centers. Pictures there. So last year, we had about 15,400 patients who made 46,000 visits. Patients were coming about three times a year. Then you've got the payer list there. Most of our patients have Medicaid care sources, the big payer, Medicare as well. We do all the private insurances as well. So you name it, we'll accept it. 15% of our private insurance, only 5% by insured. So we thank the state of Ohio from years ago, expanding Medicaid. That made a huge difference. The zip code, I've highlighted, West Dayton zip codes. It's mostly in the west side there anyway, west of 74. About 29% of our patients reside in one of these zip codes. Even if you're going to East Dayton for dental services or Corbin-Nixon for services, it's not just patients going to Charles Drew. They continue in any of our facilities. Just one thing, as Sarah pointed out, as a federally qualified health center, FQAC, we are required to see patients regardless of ability to pay. We are required to provide primary care, dental, and behavioral health services and those enabling services that I've mentioned. We are required to provide fighting fee discounts for our patients. It's helpful for the uninsured, but patients who have a high deductible plan, a large copay, also discount at copay based on family size and income. I have 11 bosses and six of them are patients of ours. So we are required to have patient majority board directors. So I always juggle when some nonprofits say, yeah, we have a consumer on our board. Six of my bosses can hear from us. It makes my job very interesting. Makes my job very interesting. We offer low costs medications for our patients. We have the option to have a pharmacy within our four walls or contract with area pharmacies. We contract with area pharmacies. Medications that we have, all those products. Very proud of the quality we provide. We're nationally recognized as a bronze award for being in the top 30% of health centers in the country for our overall clinical quality. The year after that, we got a silver award. We're the top 20% of all health centers in the country for our clinical quality outcomes. We've gone on to my topics. If there's any questions.
Well, I'll start talking while these slides are getting set up. Gina McFarlane Allen, the CEO of Five Rivers Health Centers. Similar to Greg, we're a federally qualified health center. And we've been around since 2011. We broke away from Miami Valley and Good Samaritan Hospital because the losses that we were incurring at those particular sites just could not be sustained. We served 12,000, we started with 12,000 patients, we're up to 27,000 patients. There are 60 federally qualified health centers in Ohio. We're the ninth largest. We've grown from 77 employees to over 300. Our patients speak 49 different languages that we serve. We are more than a doctor's office. We are a one-stop shop. We provide variety of services to our patients. We try to do everything we can to meet those social determinates of health. Besides transportation, legal partnership, we make sure that patients get what they need, when they need it, from us. So I won't go through the list, I'll let you just keep looking at it. Our visits continue to grow. We had a dip during COVID, but we're coming back strong. Here, just looking at the patients, we do both medical, dental, behavioral health vision. On the dental side, you need to know that dental is the number one unmet need within this community right now. We have 1,600 patients trying to get served. There are no waiting lists, because not a lot of providers provide dental services. Our patients are pretty diverse, primarily people of color. About 20, about 24% of our patients are children. We're starting to see a growing number of older adults too as well. So I took a different approach. What are some of my issues? So if you don't mind, and part of it is, one of our challenges is Medicaid is unwinding. And so a lot of our patients are losing Medicaid right now. So they're moving from Medicaid to being uninsured. So this is having a negative impact on all of us financially. There are pharmacies closing on the west side of town. There are primary care providers that are being driven out of West Dayton. In some cases, they're poaching the Medicare patients, but leaving those uninsured and Medicaid patients. There's a lack of non-emergency transportation services for patients. You don't want everyone to call 911. You want them to figure out a way how to get to the hospital when they need it, but we need a process in order to do that. Again, because we have patients that speak 49 different languages, the cost of interpretation services for us is tremendous. We're looking at a half a million dollars a year, and that number continues to grow. As well as, you know, we're a welcome, we're Welcome Dayton city, so we're seeing an increasing number of undocumented patients, and most of them are ineligible for Medicaid. So as much as we try, we still need to provide other services. These are my solutions. We need to provide more access for patients, and that's what we've been doing. We've added new providers, and we're trying to hire more. The city of Dayton could help us in trying to provide more loan repayments for providers. If we want African-American and people of color to live in this neighborhood, we need to help them. City of Dayton created this wonderful Welcome Dayton program, but you're not really supporting all of the organizations who are taking care of these new citizens. So again, I'm asking you, can you help us by helping to compensate us at least $400,000 a year for these interpretations? You want to keep people well so they don't have to go to the hospital. And that's what our function is on the primary care side. Create a program for uninsured pregnant women. You know, right now, there's nothing out there. We're providing care, but again, one NICU baby is going to cost you over $200, $300,000. But if we take care of them well before they wind up, that baby winds up ill, we would do so much more for them. About $4,000 a year could cover an uninsured pregnant woman. As well as, why not provide long-acting reversible contraceptives so that people have a choice of when to get pregnant? They're expensive, but they will last three to five years. But no one is paying for that at this particular time. Create a non-emergency transportation program for patients on the west side of Dayton. We are have the ability to bill for transportation, but we also eat the cost for someone who's uninsured, who's also on Medicare too as well. But if we can create a transportation program, so then when people actually need services to get to the hospital, they can get to the hospital. And those are my points.
Thank you. We have approximately three minutes.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. No, no problem.
No problem here. I'm here to close, okay? Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. My name is Cedric Howard. I'm with Oak Street Health. We're a primary care provider for our senior adults here. We have two centers here located, we locate on the corner of Wayne in Wyoming, and we also located in the West Town Shopping Center, right across from the VA Medical Center. We service adults that are on Medicare. We're headquartered in Chicago, Illinois. We came into the market in 2020 during the pandemic, and we were boots on the ground and looking for, see if we can help and assist. I wrote down a couple of questions here that that's been going on. We asked what would we impact? We impactful by being president of the community, and we're a primary care physician's office. You can get a same-day or next-day appointment with us for adults that are on Medicare. Where's the help coming from is a is a question that was brought in today. It's coming from Oak Street Health. We have 240 centers across the country. I'm in 28 states. My parent company is CBS Pharmacy. They own us. You'll be able to see us at any CBS Pharmacy. There's 9,000 CBS pharmacies across the country. You'll be able to see us anywhere, set up a table, table link, and going towards the community, disseminating information. One more highlight, we are sponsored by AARP. We're the only primary physicians office that is sponsored by AARP. They have 38 million members in that in that organization. I'm here with my colleague Sheila Ballard. My role is the Community Engagement Manager for both both centers. She's an outreach executive. My role is to get us in those spaces to where we can serve our community, look for our residents that need primary care. Here's what we believe.
I don't think we have time for that, since you said we only had three minutes.
One minute now.
Now, I really understand that, because, you know, but I'm really sorry.
Seriously, we'd like you to come back.
Okay, okay, okay. But I would like to add on top of what Cedric was saying, is that, you know, we've been here in Dayton since 2020. We have two locations. We are in 35 states within, without a 50. We are building three new facilities in Columbus. We have three in Cincinnati. We have one in Toledo, and I think we have four in Cleveland. So we've been around for a long time, and we provide primary care services for adult for adults that are on Medicare. Within Oak Street, we do provide the transportation. We pick our clients up for every appointment, anything that they have to have done at Oak Street. We will pick them up and take them back home from that visit. We have a so we have a social worker located inside of all of our facilities, because if we have anyone that comes in, because we mainly deal with low to moderate income patients, and if we have anyone that comes in and they're in the need of housing, clothing, food, we try to direct them in that right direction. We also do, I said, we did the transportation. All of our clients, when they come in, we give them at least 40 minutes with our primary care teams. We don't rush our clients. We're there to listen to them, listen to all of their concerns. We want to hear all of their aches and pains. We want to hear all of that. And I think that's where we consider ourselves apart from other primary care doctors and other clinics, that we spend that time with our patients. We give them that 40 minutes every time they come in for a visit. But hopefully, we would, we would, we're going to show the slides, but I know that time is short, but maybe we can come back and go through our slide presentation.
Absolutely. Okay, we would definitely like to have and have Darius get in contact with you to arrange the time. We have, unfortunately or unfortunately, we have a meeting at 6 o'clock, and we have people waiting for us. We have some good things to say and some questions to ask, so we don't want to miss that. Okay. So thank you, Gina, so much. Really, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.